Welcome to October 14, 2025 City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor Phil Tumey-Purle.
Here.
Councilmember Longville.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Washington.
Here.
Approve of the revised agenda?
Your Honor, I move approval of the revised agenda with the exception of moving special presentation number three up to the front, please.
Second.
More discussion, changes, hearing none, motion approved. And it's to the RX Kids introduction.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to welcome representatives from RX Kids here. We have Dr. Mona Hannah, we have representatives from Oakland County and Olso, and this is an absolutely amazing program, and I will, don't want to steal their thunder, I just want to tell them thank you, that I am so pleased that you've chosen Hazel Park to be part of this amazing program.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nice to have you again.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Dr. Mona Hannah, I'm a pediatrician, professor at Michigan State University, the Associate Dean for Public Health, and the founder and director of RX Kids. And I am here with Sarah Gold from Oakland County, and Al Patrick from Olso, the Oakland-Livingston Human Services Agency, which is the community champion. You all have packets in front of you, sorry I couldn't get them to you earlier, about RX Kids. I'm going to give you just a big overview of what it is and how it's been going in Hazel Park where it is live, then I'd be happy to answer any kind of questions or take any comments. So RX Kids is a nation's first. We call it a prescription for health, hope, and opportunity. If you go to the second page of your packet, you see a graph that really depicts how hard it is for folks to get by during the critical window of having a baby. The greatest economic shock is around pregnancy and childbirth, due to a perfect storm of issues, income drops, expenses rise, and terribly, this maternal-infant window is actually so consequential for children. Your brain doubles in size in that first year of life. What happens in that short window really shapes your entire life course. So RX Kids is this kind of bold effort to eliminate poverty in this window of life, so that kids can grow up with a healthy foundation to be successful. So RX Kids provides every pregnant mother in a community $1,500 in mid-pregnancy, and once a baby's born, it's $500, and for here in Hazel Park, it's for the first six months. So it's very time limited, it's just designed just for this window that is so economically vulnerable and so critical for future health and development. RX Kids started in the city of Flint in January of 2024, and really kind of based on our tremendous success, and thanks to support of so many funders, so many different kind of foundations, corporations, as well as public dollars, we've been able to expand, and that's why we're here today. So in last year's budget, the governor put $20 million as a TANF redirection, and we can talk about the wonkiness of that if you'd like, which allowed us to have more money to expand, and then we were able to leverage other dollars, and for Hazel Park, those other dollars came from the Oakland County Commission, which voted to match those funds, and then we were able to seamlessly expand. So in 2025, we expanded to Kalamazoo, we expanded to five counties in the eastern upper peninsula, the poorest parts of the U.P., Clare County in mid-Michigan, Pontiac in May, if I'm not mistaken, and then Hazel Park and Royal Oak in August, right? And, oh, sorry, Hazel Park and Royal Oak Township in August. And these Oakland County communities, Pontiac, Royal Oak Township, and Hazel Park, were selected based on data. These are the communities with the greatest need, and so it has seamlessly launched. The program is led by Michigan State University, we have a partner at the University of Michigan, but all the hard work is done by an international nonprofit called GiveDirectly. They're the folks that enroll people, verify them, do the safeguarding of the mothers and families, fraud detection, and get people their cash transfers, which is by and large a direct deposit to a checking account. There is an option to pick up a prepaid debit card. So it's a super-low administration program that is able to reach an entire population. It's a place-based intervention. So I just had my numbers for Hazel Park. Hazel Park doesn't have that many births per year, and I think to date, we've enrolled, gosh, I think it's about 17 pregnant mothers, but it's all on our website, you can go to RXkids.org, the dashboard updates every single week in terms of how many families enrolled, how much cash has been prescribed, and more demographics about those families. I'll share a little bit about what we've learned, and then I'll be happy to entertain any kind of questions or comments. So RX Kids is really built on the extensive global and domestic evidence of cash transfers, child cash transfers, child allowances. Seventy percent of countries in the world do some sort of child allowances. And then we did it during the expanded child tax credit in 2021. So during COVID, we pretty much gave all families unconditional cash transfers, most families, and that dropped child poverty to its lowest level ever, and with that, a whole host of outcomes improved. That unfortunately was not renewed by the U.S. Senate, and millions of kids went back into poverty. But it was a proof point that we can eliminate poverty, and we can think big, and we can do things of a scale that hasn't been done before. So that was a bit of the inspiration of RX Kids, which is really built on mountains and mountains of evidence and science. So what we have learned is very similar. In Flint, where we've been around the longest, a massive improvement in family financial stability, less evictions, more ability to pay rent and mortgage, improved nutrition security, improvements in maternal mental health, decreased stress, decreased postpartum depression, decreased anxiety. We are also seeing population birth outcomes, healthier babies, less premature babies, less low-birth babies, less new kid admissions. Those translate into cost savings pretty acutely, especially in terms of healthcare and child welfare, and we are also seeing an economic stimulus in our local economies. The Flint Chamber released a report recently, the Upjohn Institute is about to release a report on the multiplier effect of these dollars flowing through local economies, supporting small businesses and grocery stores and childcare providers, and the list goes on. So lots of benefits from this really kind of simple upstream intervention. But we are so excited to be in Hazel Park. You have a lot more information in your packet, you also have a wonderful kind of bag, which includes one of our spokes beers, we have rack cards and clinics around the community in different places, which Olso has really been a champion of, making sure that folks around the community know about that. We do lots of other marketing, but by and large, the take-up rate is pretty great, and that's something that we follow over time, because it's so easy to sign up, and it's really easy to understand who's eligible. I'll stop talking, I could talk forever.
Your floor.
You're bringing us a wonderful program, and you can talk about it for as long as you want.
That's most of it. So you may have been following the news, the budget, the Michigan budget was signed last week, and kind of based on the popularity of the program, the success, the really wild bipartisan support, more money was allocated for this program in the budget that was just signed. So that's going to allow us to continue being in places like Hazel Park, but also massively expanding this program to more high-need communities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the efforts.
Awesome.
The parents are going to appreciate all this as well.
Yeah, what we hear from moms and families is that a weight's been lifted off their shoulders, that they don't have to choose between food and rent, that they can parent, that they can stay home, or they can pay for childcare. So what we've been hearing is phenomenal, we're so happy to be able to do this for the families of Hazel Park.
I do have a quick question. So when I was sent over some of the information, the original number that you had stated was approximately 130 families in Hazel Park? I'm wondering, since we've only signed up 17, and we have approval for funding for this year, does that funding then continue on for extended years, or does it have to be used this year?
No, we will, if there's more babies or less babies, it would cover all babies.
Well, I was just hoping that if it wasn't used, that it would just continue the program on.
Yes, we're going to continue the program as long as we have funding.
We love that, thank you so much.
Question, Dr. Mona. Hypothetically, if there was a baby born earlier this year, prior to this program being launched, would that still be eligible for use?
No. So unfortunately, the day that we launch, so all pregnant people, you have to be at least 16 weeks pregnant to enroll, but it has to be all babies born on that date or later.
Had a baby born in March, that's why.
Have another baby. Get to talk to his wife.
It's hard, it's hard to have a baby, right? It is so expensive. It's estimated to cost, just that first year of life, $20,000. That is crazy, it's so hard to have a baby. So folks aren't having as many babies.
Thank you so much.
You bet, thanks for having us, we have amazing champions and partners. Once again, a huge thank you to Oakland County Commission, they're the ones that came up with these matched dollars to make this happen in Hazel Park, but we're happy to kind of answer any questions that come up in the future. My information is on the back of this packet.
We'll share this on our website and our Facebook page, and again, thank you for your leadership on this important issue, really, it's appreciated, and thank you to the county and to Olso, and to everybody involved with this. We're very grateful that Hazel Park is now a participant in this program.
Spread the word, spread the joy. Thanks, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm leaving all these.
Yep, we will make sure those are distributed. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That takes us back to the special presentation section one. Proclamation, October 2025, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month program is dedicated to increasing knowledge about the importance of the early detection of breast cancer, and whereas this year, an estimated 316,950 Americans will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, with one in eight women being diagnosed at some point in their lives, making it the second-most diagnosed form of cancer among American women, and whereas this resolution will highlight ongoing efforts to raise awareness for breast cancer research, detection, treatment, and it is owed to the estimated 42,170 women who will be lost this year to breast cancer, as well as the millions of survivors to do everything possible to support the fight against this terrible disease. Being known, I, Michael Webb, the mayor, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park, Michigan. I call upon the citizens, residents, agencies, organizations, and businesses in increase of participation in our efforts to prevent, treat, and ultimately cure this terrible disease. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on behalf of my wife, who is a 33-year breast cancer survivor, I want to thank you and council for this proclamation and resolution.
Thank you, thank you. And next one is, I pushed it up.
I got it. I know you had some eye surgery. Proclamation declaring October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park. Whereas domestic violence is the willful intimidation, physical assault, battery, sexual assault, and/or other abusive behavior as part of a systematic pattern of power and control perpetrated by one intimate partner against another. It includes physical violence, sexual violence, threats, and emotional abuse. The frequency and severity of domestic violence can vary dramatically. And whereas domestic violence is prevalent in every community and affects all people regardless of age, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, gender, race, religion, or nationality, physical violence is often accompanied by emotionally abusive and controlling behavior as part of a much larger systemic pattern of dominance and control. Domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death. The devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime. And whereas in the United States, one in four women and one in nine men experience sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And whereas thousands of individuals in Oakland County are impacted by domestic violence each year. And whereas domestic violence and abuse of family members can take many forms, including physical, sexual, emotional, financial, and psychological battering, where abusers use intimidation, threats, isolation, and a variety of other behaviors to maintain fear and power. And whereas domestic violence can be prevented with the development of educational programs, every citizen can aid and assist those suffering from domestic abuse, and let victims know that support is available through shelters, hotlines, and other services. And whereas domestic violence, a tremendous concern among community leaders, police, judges, advocates, healthcare workers, and concerned Americans, as they work together across the nation to develop solutions to this serious problem and to implement services that will improve our responses when it occurs. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to increase education and intervention efforts to improve public awareness of the severity of the crime, and to help prevent violence and reduce the related cost to society. And whereas the city of Hazel Park works with organizations such as Oakland County, Common Ground, and Help Against Violent Encounters Now Haven, including a high-risk response team, in efforts to eliminate domestic violence through treatment and prevention services. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Hazel Park does hereby proclaim the month of October has Domestic Awareness Month.
So move. It takes us down to civic announcements, but I want to bring up our state representative, Mike McFall, and our former colleague here of Hazel Park, to give us a presentation. He's got some great news for us.
I think all the news is out already, I saw the video on the Facebook page today, so. But I'm State Representative Mike McFall, as everybody, since I used to sit up here, right there, actually. And as you know, as they just mentioned, the budget was signed recently, took us a long time to get it done, but we did get it done. But I am very proud to announce that I was able to secure $2.5 million for a new ladder truck for the city of Hazel Park. Along with that, I also, while this isn't our city, also $900,000 for Warren's Public Safety Dispatch Center, and that goes along with the half a million dollars that I was able to get in last year's budget for the Madison Heights Police Department. So public safety has been one of my, along with mental health issues, has been one of my key issues that I have put a lot of focus on. So I just wanted to thank the chief for all of his support, getting us all the information that we needed to make sure that this got across the finish line and signed. And as soon as we have more information, since the budget was just signed, we don't have all the details as to how to draw down the funds and all of that just yet, but we will shortly, so.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your efforts and your time, and I think this is some of the best news we've had in a very long time.
Yeah, unfortunately, revenue sharing got cut a little bit.
I do want to go there. Yeah.
But we're hopefully.
You heard that from me, but.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I was in contact with all of the communities, because obviously, all the communities within the district, which is Centerline, Warren, Madison Heights, and Hazel Park, were all very concerned about the cuts to revenue sharing. The revenue sharing cuts actually turned out to not be as devastating as it was originally proposed, because obviously, we have the public safety revenue sharing, they're calling it now, and also local road funding, which, as we know, if you drive through the city of Hazel Park, we need local road funding.
Where you picked up a lot of that for us, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, it was, it's over, it's over half a million dollars increase a year for local roads, so that is, you know, that's a net positive. Like you said, the only problematic thing in this year's budget was the reduction. We initially thought we had a little more from the public safety fund than we lost, but somebody from the Senate staff was looking at the wrong line item, so we ended up with a little net reduction in revenue sharing, even with the public safety payment, and we'll be monitoring the legislature and keep trying to nudge them to make sure that revenue sharing is held harmless, because it's so important for cities over time, that this shift in sales tax, from the general sales tax to the road fund, is good for local roads, but it's bad for general city operations in the long run. So we're going to be looking for a solution to hold that harmless. But I want to thank Representative McFall. $2.5 million is a Herculean amount of money in this kind of a budget environment, and I think, I think you got the biggest award out of anybody in the Democratic Caucus, so.
Probably.
By like.
I don't know, I didn't compare, but.
So, sure you didn't, but, but yeah, I think that you did, and you were either one or two, and really, it's something that would have cost us a ton of money, and we'd had to finance over time, and that just frees up other resources that we have to do other things. So all in all, it was, you know, thanks to Representative McFall's efforts, this is pretty much a successful, very successful budget.
To go to Representative McFall, he has and understands where we are, the resident and former colleague of ours, and understands the trying times in which we have here financially, and how we've managed to budget ourselves properly, community as a local group, versus how some other areas in the state even tries to budget the wrong way, I think we do quite well with what we have.
Yeah, and I also just want to remind people that while I am bragging about securing this, this is your tax dollars coming back to the city, and so we always have to remember that, that this isn't a tax increase, we didn't have to pass a special billage, this is already tax dollars that you've paid.
Exactly.
I think it's a huge testament to your ability to work across the aisle and work with your co-electeds up in Lansing, and I really appreciate that about you, and as our representative, I really am grateful for that, so thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I will, you know, remind everybody that he is this year's current Michigan Municipal League legislator of the year. So, you know, now that he did a great job last year to win that, this year, he did himself again with this grant. So we'll be expecting more next year.
Set a high bar.
That's a high bar, but it was, he did a great job.
All right, thank you.
Got a question for you, Mike.
Oh.
I do. In the budget, you added a 24% tax on candidate wholesale.
I voted no on that, FYI.
Two things, what kind of.
He did not.
What kind of dollar amount did they attach to that? And it's being challenged in court.
It is. So the dollar amount that they actually attached to it, they predict that they're going to bring in $420 million? I don't know how they.
Huge.
I don't know how they were able to come up with exactly 420, I don't know how that worked exactly, but accountants can be very creative. But what was your other question?
It's being challenged.
It is being challenged, because there are questions as to whether or not there were enough votes for it, because of it being a.
Constitution.
Yeah, in the Constitution, we're supposed to have three-quarters of each chamber.
Is that what a supermajority is?
Yes, yep, and so there was not three-quarters in the House, I don't know, and I don't think that there was in the Senate either, and that is what they're, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't really speak to whether or not that's legal, but that is what the challenge is, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Representative.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, any other civic announcements from the public for special events we got going on? I'm bringing you right up. Candidate forum, Caitlin Ellis.
Catherine Eliwitz, 1485 East Pearl. I just wanted to invite you all and anyone listening to the candidate forum tomorrow evening. It is going to be at the library at 6:00 p.m., and this candidate forum is moderated by the League of Women Voters, which is a nonpartisan organization. We're also partnering with HB Can, Hazel Park Civic Action Network, also a nonpartisan organization, and this will be one of the first candidate forums in Hazel Park that's moderated by the League of Women Voters in a long time, and so we're very excited to have this back in Hazel Park. I think it will be a benefit to the community to hear from elected officials, and again, this is a nonpartisan event, all candidates were invited equally at the same exact time, and I just wanted to just invite everyone here, everyone at home, to please join us tomorrow, and this is the beginning of a tradition. We'd like to do this every year, and just hear from our officials and our candidates. It really means a lot. When you run for public office, we know it's a big sacrifice, and we appreciate that, and we also want to hear from you, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I'm going to make my apologies now, I'm not going to make it tomorrow, unfortunately, I have a previous engagement with the county executive for a dinner engagement, I've been trying to schedule this for about two months, and I'm, no.
Is this going to be streamed?
It's not going to be streamed, but we will be recording it, and then we're going to release it on our YouTube channel. The League of Women Voters has very specific rules about the video, it cannot be clipped, so if you see any of the candidates taking clips of this video, that is not allowed. They are all signing a candidate pledge to follow the rules. The League of Women Voters has very specific rules to make sure that it's safe, and, well, safe, yes, but equal and respectful for all the candidates involved. There's no personal attacks allowed, nothing like that. It is a question-and-answer forum. There will be questions taken from the audience, no one has been given questions ahead of time or anything like that. It is, the League of Women Voters has a very specific way that they run this forum, and so we are following that to a T, so.
What time did you say tomorrow?
It's at 6:00 p.m. at the library, 6:00 p.m. at the library. And all candidates are invited, thank you, Mike, for letting us know, but again, this is nonpartisan, and it is run by two nonpartisan groups. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate the invitation.
Absolutely, thank you.
And it takes us to John Mann, 31 Manatee Avenue.
I was just, I guess, I just wanted to just really quick about a shipping container, 40-foot shipping container parked outside of my garage. I talked to you before, Melissa, about it in regards, I think, the city attorney. It's behind Design Struck, it's been there for 90 days now. It's right, I mean, directly outside of my garage. So right now, it's pretty tight to get into my garage, but I'm concerned about when the snow comes, they plow the alley, and it's most likely going to create a pretty big issue for me getting in and out of my garage. Plus, when they use it, they're just dumping stuff in there, they block it, I'm not able to get out of my garage, my wife's not able to park in.
It's on their property, not the alley.
It is, yep, it's on, but it opens to the alley, so it, you know, technically, if you, it's probably not enough.
Somewhat obstructive?
Yeah, and it's just ugly, to be completely honest, I mean, it's, but it's, I mean, so it's there, it's, so it's behind Design Struck, but again, I just want to address, it's been there for 90 days, the ordinance says they need to renew a permit every 45 days, potentially, it can be done there permanently, and I just.
Well, they have a certain amount of fees that they have to pay to have a permit.
Yeah, I'll look into it tomorrow and find out where we're at with it.
And can you, can you state your name and address?
Yeah, sorry, my name is John Mann, I live at 31 Manatee Avenue.
Thank you.
Can we ask for an update at next meeting on this? Thank you.
Perfect, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public discussion, civic announcements, anything? Seeing no one, closed public discussion. Any council people have any civic announcements? I do have one comment I want to make. The Halloween Art Fair, which I think a few of us were at over the weekend, was a wonderful event this year, where they pulled it off really well. It's their second year, and one year they got a little rain down the first time, I think Andy was involved with that one.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, one of the art fairs, but I don't think.
And it was, I think it was just one of the better events we've had in a while, that's all new, and it complements our current art fair as well, and I think the art fair itself actually was a precursor to what we may have another one going in the spring, and we'll see what happens. I've heard some rumors of that, too. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the members of council that had a chance to make their way to Grand Rapids to watch me get the Jim Sinclair Award from the Michigan Municipal League. I was so glad to have you all there to share that moment with me, and I also get to recognize somebody else in the community who's won a prestigious award from a statewide organization, and that is our own Lacey Christiansen, who just won the Finance Visionary Award from the Michigan Association of Certified Public Accountants. So congratulations, Lacey.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And we're going to move down to the consent agenda. Items one through 11 on the revised agenda, we have a motion to approve.
Your Honor, I move approval of the consent agenda items one through 11.
Support. And any dissension? I'd like to ask if there's any, anybody want to speak on any of these? Do I go ahead and ask, is there any applicants here that has a business license that wants to be recognized? Step up to the podium, give your name and address, and what type of business you have?
This is your chance to take a couple minutes and let the residents of Hazel Park know who you are and what your business is.
My name is Marvin Elkizmika, we own the property at 23451 Dequinda Road. We're applying for the business license for special land use, our license over there. We've owned the property for over 25 years at this point, we've.
That's a, that's the next, that's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, this is for a business license.
Business licenses.
Okay, didn't mean to cut you off, but, midspeal.
We get your chance.
As I say, we're all scanning the addresses, like, wait a minute.
Yeah, we're all looking, doing, like, where's this one from?
Hold on.
Hey, do you want to say something? Come on up here and say, come on, we see you back there, come on up here, come on up here and introduce yourself.
It's your commercial.
It's your, it's your chance. Okay, all right.
I try to advocate for all businesses.
Come on and tell us who you are and what your business is about.
I'm sushi friend.
My name is Washington Christian, I apply for a business license for 906 East Nye Mile Road. I apply for a business license for 906 East Nine Mile Road, the Gaijin Sushi. So, I hope it gets approved.
It just did.
It just did.
You got to prove.
You have it. It just got approved. Approve the whole consent agenda.
Give us your hours, give us what you do.
Yeah, what do you do there? When are you open?
Tell us about your...
I open at 7:30 tonight because I wanted to make this meeting, but after the business license, I'll be open from 5:00 PM until midnight every night, and then Friday and Saturday from 5:00 PM until 2:00 AM, and then 5:00 PM until 4:00 AM on Saturday. I work really hard, so, yeah, so you guys can come by.
Midnight sushi.
Who needs Taco Bell when you can get sushi?
Anybody's welcome to come by tonight and try it also.
Oh, I'm stopping after the meeting.
And karaoke, we have karaoke and things like that, too, available.
Love it.
Welcome to Hazel Park.
Thank you.
See? I'm so glad you came up here and introduced it.
Like, it feels like high school.
You did fine. Welcome to Hazel Park.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, it takes us, we have no dissension to the approval of the consent agenda. Takes us to the administrative report, special land use case 25-04-23451 Dequindre Road. Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Let me grab this one here.
Mr. Mayor, James Finkley is here from the Planning Department, but in a nutshell, this is a special use application for vehicle sales and rental.
Well, come on up and give us a presentation if you'd like for the second time.
This is a special land use application for 23451 Dequindre Road, vehicle sales and rental. The applicant is obviously here before you. He can introduce himself and make his case.
Okay, so, thank you guys again for hearing me out. Again, my name is Marvin Elkesmika. We own the property at 2345, or 541 Dequindre. Basically, we're applying for a special land use for a dealer sale, our car sales. Again, we've owned the property for over 25 years. It was tenant occupied prior to this. I am planning on owner occupying it. I know that was a big problem before. I know we had some issues prior. I've been ahead of everything. I've been speaking to everybody, I've been updating them. As soon as the weather permitted, I started working on the property immediately after. All I'm looking to do at this point is kind of bring something different to our business over there. My dad was a mechanic for over 25 years. He's retired now. I know nothing about cars when it comes to fixing them, not going to sit there and lie, but sales is easy to me. I've been doing it for years. I did it prior, and basically, I'm just looking to create local employment opportunities for the local residents. I mean, increase tax revenue for the community here, and I don't see, I mean, at this point, it becomes a no-brainer for me. And anything that, any questions you guys have, please let me know, and I'll be able to address them.
You're aware there have been some severe code violations there...
I'm well aware.
...in the past.
Yes.
And you're aware that we're going to be watching this to make sure that that situation does not repeat itself.
Yes.
And you're telling me that you're aware of that, and you're going to guarantee me that we're not going to have those same kind of problems...
Happily guarantee those.
...and those same kinds of issues that are happening before with the proliferation of junk vehicles. It's just, it looked terrible. It was a blight on this community, so we just want to make sure that doesn't happen again.
That is part of the reason I'm not a real big fan of having another used car lot in the city.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it to my attention. I do have a solution for it. We do own the vacant lot to our right side of it, which I did apply part of the site plan review, but that's going to be resubmitted just for storage. It'll be a screen lot, so none of the vehicles that'll be under repair will be visible. So, everything that'll be on the lot will just be the cars that obviously are up for sale, so that will solve that issue. And then, again, anything that you guys see, I don't plan on. I already know the problems before, and when it's tenant occupied, my hands are a little tied. I can't really control much of the things besides sending them letters, just because of how the law works. So, at this point, as it being owner occupied, I plan to address all those upfront.
I believe I had a conversation with you about this with a mutual friend that came to us. It made the introduction. I said, you've got to have something more retailish. We're not going to go back to an auto repair. I think it doesn't make sense considering the history of the property. And making it more retailish, what's going to make your sales lot in more retailish type of establishment rather than the other used car lots? That's what you've got to convince us of and why we should give you the special use.
So, I do have an advantage that I want to say other dealers have as well, but a little more on their end. So, I have an uncle who owns a car lot at this point in Hazel, in Warren, who actually does wholesale vehicles. So, I have actually access to those wholesale vehicles, which I can bring those deals to the customer, to the residents here. So, as far as retail, I'm retailing those cars to them, but at wholesale pricing, and that's what I'm hoping to actually give that opportunity.
Guess what I'm trying to ask, are you really going to fix the place up and make it look a little bit better?
Absolutely.
Shack on a corner with a bunch of cars?
Absolutely. That's something that I've talked to Amanda about. I'm a huge fan of actually renovating. I got ahead of it immediately after. I painted that building myself. I installed cameras myself. I seal coded that property myself. I'm talking my hands. I didn't hire anybody for this. So, I'm very hands-on, and I like to actually work in an environment that's actually clean. I was working in mortgages for eight years prior to this. I worked in a Fortune 500 at Quicken Loans. I'm not some random, you know...
Well, guess what you're saying, we're saying, you've got a lot of nice frontage there. To see something a little more dressed up.
Attractive.
Attractive, thank you.
Okay.
Complimentary to the neighborhood as well.
That's going to work with...
Because the neighbors are, there's only that alley in between, so nobody wants more derelict vehicles in their neighborhood, right? Like, nobody wants to look out there. Nobody wants to come out for coffee on their porch and see vehicles that are rusting away.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I agree.
And that was an issue previously.
Yeah.
So, I think that's a big concern. Now, when you're saying owner operated, are you going to be the person doing the sales? Are you hiring people to do the sales?
I'm going to operate the business. As far as sales goes, I will be a part of it, but I'm not going to say I'm going to be there every...
Exclusively, right? There might be other employees, but you, but you do plan to participate?
I'll be a part of it, absolutely. And then, like I said, as far as any disrepaired vehicles, the only way I can solve for that is with the vacant lot, and I'm hoping that, I've already talked to James about it and signed my review, and they were all on board with it, so...
Even if you get the vacant lot, what I don't want to do is create a graveyard for junk vehicles behind the screened fencing here. Okay?
I agree.
So, understand, we're not going to let you keep that. That's, that will never get approved here, okay? If you're screening vehicles that are there temporarily to be repaired and then placed out for retail sales, that could be something we would discuss with you, but under no circumstances are we going to allow you to keep a junkyard behind a screening fence.
That is absolutely not my intention. My intention is literally to use that storage lot as vehicles that are under repair, so they're not sitting on the lot, and then just bringing them back onto the lot or additional storage for vehicles that obviously don't have space for as cars are being rotated through the lot.
Right. Again, placement in that screened area, should we even approve that for you, will be on a temporary basis with no vehicle being allowed to be stored there for an extended period of time. You understand that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we've got to keep in any vehicles that are for sale commercially on your lot. The tires need to be inflated, they need to run. We are not going to allow outdoor storage of junk vehicles or vehicles in disrepair in any way in this facility. Are we clear?
I'm very clear of that.
This is vehicle sales or rental. This is not a auto repair facility.
It is vehicle sales or rental, yes.
Correct.
So, do you, do you have a relationship with a vehicle repair, or you have that at one of your other facilities that you do vehicle?
I have other people I can speak to in regards to repairing vehicles.
The reason I'm asking is because you're talking about storing vehicles that need repair potentially on the second lot that is not on this, that we're approving today or that we're discussing today. But my concern is, if you are planning on having vehicles there that need to be repaired, where is your repair plan?
So, if those vehicles are under repair, the only reason they'll be there is if the mechanic shop doesn't have space for them at the time, because as they, they only have so much space. So, I'd be bringing them there and then dropping them off as we go, you know?
That makes so much sense. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk to Mr. Finkley and Amanda.
James and Amanda, could you approach, please?
We all know that this has been a controversial site for years. I was just trying, my brief discussion I had with them is I told them it needed to be more retailish, and I'm hoping that you've stressed that as well. And tell us what you've seen and what your requirements were for this property, please.
So, from the perspective of the site plan review, the three big things that would come up are the dumpster enclosure is going to have to move because that obstructs the sidewalk, the parking is insufficient in the packets. There's a sample layout that would require, because as, I'm sure you all saw, this was a car junkyard at the back of the lot. So, having legally marked parking spaces that are reserved for actual cars for show is one of the methods. The additional lot would actually have to basically be just graded into an actual parking lot, so it wouldn't be...
Screened.
And screened, yes. But more or less, it would have to be developed with like drainage systems and marked parking as an actual parking lot, and then if that is used for, you know, what has been discussed. But it wouldn't be able to be developed, the additional lot, as just a junkyard or anything like that.
James, can you talk into the microphone, please?
Sorry.
And proper signage and everything. We talked about that, too, I hope.
Correct. Yes, that's actually one of the, that's one of the recommendations for special land use approval. If approved, is that all signage located and/or associated with this property must comply with the sign code. It would also have to comply with Chapter 8.28 for vehicle storage, any other necessary federal, state, or county or municipal laws. So, it's not to say that, I mean, this property had its business license revoked before, so, I mean, it's not a guarantee, but we have discussed a lot of these things. And I would say from your end, Marvin, you've been pretty forthcoming and direct and good to work with, which is not something I can say for all applicants.
And again, it is a special use, so that anytime it can be reviewed.
I would like to echo what James said as well. Marvin has been wonderful to work with. He has been really responsive. James was probably the good cop, and I was probably the bad cop with Marvin. Yeah. So, he's experienced my wrath, and he knows. And it is still technically a tagged building as well, so like, I've told him repeatedly that he cannot put lipstick on a pig and think that this is going to get through city council. That just will not happen, so I told him to make lots of pretty pictures and show exactly what they're going to do, that we would hold them to that. He knows all the things that we've been upset about. He's experienced code going over there every single day to tag and to get the person that was there, so he knows what we will do if he doesn't do what he's supposed to do.
The auto bays that were there, are those going to be like a office area for display of one car or something, or is it just going to be another storage area for cars?
The building, is he talking? I don't think there's an auto bay at this one, is there? There is one, yeah.
Yeah, there's a...
There's one, and that's, there's one with like a lift, you know, where the, what are you doing in there? Yep.
Please come up to the podium for a minute. We want to hear it all.
Yeah. Tell us, tell us.
Give them the highlights of how you're going to fix the building.
So, in regards to the actual bays, I would, I did not, I'm not going to sit there and lie. I did not consider it as far as what I was doing with them. The initial plan was to reface the building and do an uplift on the building on the outside. The inside, I honestly haven't even considered what my plans are besides the current office space that I have there, but I know, obviously, mechanic is not even an option at this point, so more than likely, I would probably turn it to office space. I mean, that's my, that's my only option. It's going to be the easiest thing for me to do, tear everything out.
Display a car and put an office space in.
That works, too.
We do have harsh winters.
Can I ask what the security plan might be for this space as well, being located on a main thoroughfare close to Eight Mile? There's also the concern of multiple vehicles being there late night. Do you have a security plan in mind for that?
So, initially, we were planning on fencing the property, but then I kind of thought that looks like a tack, a little tacky to me. I'm not, I'm not really a fan of the fence.
Yeah.
So, at this point, I was thinking about just putting the larger, which obviously I was going to talk to James about, but putting the larger blocks in front of it to prevent people from going in and out, and then just considering maybe just a gate, installing just a gate for kind of entrance and exit, because you only have two actual openings.
Do you have cameras?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are they monitored cameras, or are they just kind of like...
Recorded and monitored by us.
Okay.
Yeah. I just installed them probably three days ago.
Nice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have a question for Amanda. The, any current code violations have been addressed?
No, he, since the tenant was evicted, Marvin's always addressed them immediately, like right away with our time.
That's my question, yeah.
The tenant was not cooperating, but Marvin has always done whatever I've asked him to do once he had possession of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just add, we've discussed many alternatives for this property, and given its at least since 1977 use for either auto sales or repair, there would kind of be environmental concerns for like restaurant uses or something like that. And then, obviously, it's not a really hospitable site for retail because it's so small, so there are some limiting factors with this particular site, is I guess what I would say.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you know, based on what I've heard, the administration will recommend approval of this special land use with the, all of the restrictions and requirements outlined by the city planner.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I make a suggestion for you? With the review of this site in one year by our administration, since we've had so much controversy...
Sure, we'll remember that, but...
Since we've had so much controversy over this site for years.
No, I, we can, again, this is special land use.
I know.
We can always give you...
Always review it, but I just wanted to make sure that this is going to work well. That's all. I don't want to take a chance and not...
Put it on your calendar, Mike.
And not go back and check, so...
Yeah, and again, Marvin, you're somewhat a victim of your previous tenants' actions, and...
Sorry.
Sorry about that, but we got to protect the city and the neighborhoods over there, so.
All right. Go ahead.
I actually overlapped with Marvin at Quicken. And if you work in marketing and PR and you know who a banker is, they're either really bad at their job or they're really good at their job. And Marvin was a President's Club mortgage banker, had a really, just a reputation for being tenacious, extraordinarily, just incredible work ethic and extremely responsive. So with that, I am actually very happy to move approval of the special land use with a handful of conditions. One, being that the site not violate Chapter 8.28 vehicle storage or 8.50 outdoor storage of the Hazel Park Municipal Code of Ordinances, including but not limited to by ensuring that any vehicles stored outdoors are currently in operable condition and legally eligible for street use. Two, that all signage located with and/or associated with this property must comply with the Hazel Park Sign Code. Three, all necessary federal, state, county, and municipal licensure and permits, including but not limited to building permits, business licenses, and vehicle dealer licensing must be obtained prior to the commencement of any operations or improvements for which they are required. Four, that the applicant install a Knox box. And five, that this body review the site in one year.
Second.
Are there any other restrictions, James?
I have to ask. Come on, quick.
That would probably be 30 days at most, just based on 8.28 generally speaking. But we can kind of discuss it later, too.
But yeah, it can't be more than that.
I apologize.
Sorry.
Okay. Very good.
Any more discussion from council?
We need a second.
Do I have a support?
Alexa's supported.
Any more discussion from council? Any dissension? I think we have a good, good message to share with this one.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you. Zoning ordinance amendment, second reading.
James, did you want to?
This would just be a very small change, actually, to the LM zone, which is the Tri-County Commerce Center, portions of Dequinder, and then also portions of the Warren end of Nine Mile. This would actually just be to follow up on something that the planning commission and myself have been working on, which is ways to adaptively reuse our, our manufacturing and industrial properties. So the idea behind this was to allow restaurants, retail, sales, and service uses as appropriate in that zone, not only to hopefully find new uses for some of these small buildings, but also to perhaps support some of the existing uses. For instance, if somebody wanted to open a sandwich shop at the Tri-County Commerce Center, this would perhaps be some kind of good supportive use to the existing manufacturing there.
Counsel?
It'll be a pleasure.
I'd like to move approval of the, oh man, let me find the zoning ordinance amendment on the second reading.
Second.
A discussion, dissension? Motion passes. Boards and commissions?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends the appointment of Mo Meadows and Chris Johnston to the Downtown Development Authority.
Move. Any other suggestions?
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends the appointment of Alicia Christensen to fill the vacancies created with the departure of another employee on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the General Building Authority, and the Sign Authority.
What was the name?
What's that? Lacey.
Did you say Alicia?
Yeah, that's her real name.
Lacey, that's her real name.
That's her government name?
That's the name on her birth certificate.
And something new today.
Anyways, as long as council feels confident in those changes, we'll be happy to go ahead with those.
Yeah, so moved and support, okay.
Alicia or Lacey.
Either way, it's fine.
All right. Any old business from council? Any new business for council?
Mr. Mayor, I want to share a few things with the council because we've been busy here in the city of Hazel Park, trying to provide and plan for the future. And I want to update you on some things that have been happening. First, you're seeing the demolition of the tax building and the old Sullivan Service Station at John R. just south of Woodward Heights. The city directed and ordered those demolitions because we're not going to let them continue to maintain derelict structures in our community. So we required the owners of the old CVS to tear down their facilities there and tear out their foundation and the other accompanying mess that they had there. And now we're doing that with the other owners of the property to the north. We can't force anybody to redevelop their properties, but what we can do is make sure that they're not leaving ugly, blighted, hazardous situations in our community. And I want to thank the city attorney staff and the building department for their outstanding work in this, especially Amanda Mason, who worked very hard to make sure that we got these things done. And so we're constantly working on your behalf. Next, we want to welcome Bar Gabby to the city of Hazel Park. This is a new, an exciting new restaurant that will be occupying the old Frame Building there. And we look to continue to revitalize that strip with this very cool, highly anticipated Romanian and Italian restaurant that I'm looking forward to eating there as soon as they open. And want to let you know that we've been working on a few other things, too. We're all aware...
They have the big announcement here.
We are... That's okay.
Got it.
We are all aware of the ugly, blighted husk that is the remnants of Landmark Church. Well, I'm pleased to announce to the residents of Hazel Park that the owners of that property have partnered with Robertson Brothers to redevelop that property. And here's a rendition of the planned condo development that will be constructed there. So yes, thank you, Alyssa, so we can show that here to the residents of Hazel Park. This is the preliminary drawing. We just had a chance to meet with them a couple of weeks ago, and I'm excited to report that something is going to be done there. We're going to tear down that blighted piece of property there and replace it with new housing for our residents that is in great demand. So we know that Robertson knows how to put together a development because they were very successful with their condo project, the old St. Mary Magdalene School. And now this project, again, this is preliminary, it'll change a little bit because they're planning condos of different sizes and elevations. And this should be a very upscale project that I think the people of Hazel Park will be excited about, but it will also be providing certain amounts of affordable and missing middle housing as well. So we're excited about that.
How many, do they have an estimate of how many units?
Do you remember, Lacey?
Even ballpark?
They, we, you know, I don't know, there it is, there it is.
Well, we know that most of them...
We'll allow you to count them. Well, you might have, might be on there. It might be looking like 101 units.
Well, these are...
And 17 units, so.
One car, one home, 101.
Awesome. You mentioned how many of those will be owner occupied?
They're all to be owner occupied.
Okay.
And the quickest way to address attainable housing is to create more housing.
Absolutely.
It literally is.
And it sounds like so obvious and so easy, but she's right. That's, it's like, this is how you, this is how you ease a housing crisis. You create more opportunities for housing here.
If you have supply and demand and you don't have enough supply to meet your demand, if you provide more supply than it, brings the market back to a realistic, functional, attainable.
Yep, absolutely. And now we're also looking at some upgrades. We know that there are some community groups that are utilizing the Jan Perici Art Garden on a more frequent basis. And we want to make sure that we create an environment over there that is friendly and that is welcoming. So I'm excited to show you some of the proposed changes that are going to take place at Jan Perici Art Garden within the next year. So we look forward to creating a great space for our community while at the same time honoring Jan Perici, who was an amazing public servant here and, you know, served our city admirably and honorably, and I miss her every day. So we will continue to honor her memory. And I'm so pleased that we're going to be able to bring these exciting changes to the city of Hazel Park. So we're working on these things. I want to thank James, and Lacey, and Amanda, and everybody else who's worked on this. And if I forgot anybody, and Linda from my office, and Linda Williams as well, who've been part of these discussions. And we're always working on your behalf. Sometimes it takes a while for us to actually get results. You have to put in a lot of work and elbow grease and, you know, you have false starts and misses. But sometimes some things come together, and I'm so pleased that Robertson is now involved in that church redevelopment project. So they know what they're doing. That's it for me for new business.
Any other new business from any council people, administration? Seeing none, moves to the communication department heads. Would Chief of Police like to speak on anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, first of all, I'd like to let everyone know the police department and its officers are wearing pink badges in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We've actually been doing this for, I think, about eight years in doing this. For myself, it's a personal, my mother was a survivor of breast cancer. Unfortunately, we lost her to another form of cancer. But it's an important thing to be aware of. It's important to, it can be, you know, early detection is important. You know, participate in those exams. So that's why we're, our officers are wearing these for the month. I would also like to recognize with Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the days of violence, staying in the home, the days of it being just a family matter, those are over with. You can call the police department. We will respond. We will provide resources to those victims. The, we have resources available at the station, places where you can go and people you can contact. My third note is also with Halloween will be coming up at the end of the month. So we're asking people just to be observant. There will be kids in the streets. They shouldn't be in the streets, but they will be. They'll be out there looking for candy. So just be aware of that. As well as, on a general note, pedestrians in the streets. We have sidewalks. We ask that people use those sidewalks and stay out of the streets. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Walker, thank you for putting on an outstanding open house.
I wanted to thank everyone who came out to the open house this year. I had a lot of help. I will say Nicole White was huge. I had Brian Forster come out on his own time and help out, hand out gun locks. So thank everyone who helped out with the open house. Our annual code drive will be Saturday, October 25th, at the fire stations from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Another thing to remind you guys, we'll be doing the Shop of the Hero with Youth Assistance on November 8th at the Madison Heights Target from 8:30 to noon. And then I just want to tell Mike McFall one more time, thank you for securing the funds, advocating, like, it's huge. It's been stressful my whole career, and he's helped us a lot. So I want to thank Mike McFall one more time. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other department heads wishing to speak? Seeing none, takes us to our city attorney.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say I've praised some of the other employees and department heads today, and I want to say I'm blessed to have two great chiefs. So thank you, Chief Hamlin. Thank you, Chief Walker. The residents of Hazel Park are so well-served by these two gentlemen and their dedication to protecting the city that I can't say enough about how much I enjoy working with them and how pleased I am with their job performance since they've both taken over. Mike McFall, I've praised him before. Michigan's system of municipal finance is broken, but within that context, he did a good job playing a tough hand this year to get as much as he could for the city of Hazel Park. And like I said, I think he got the, he got the biggest amount out of anybody in the Democratic Caucus in the House, and we're going to be very grateful for that. And again, thank you, James Finkley, for all your work on some of these things, as well as Lacey Christensen, who I've mentioned several times before. And I will recognize two ladies from the Hazel Park School Board, Heidi Fortress and Bev Hinton, for their strong support for the cooperative endeavor that we have that's called the Junior Vikings Athletic Program. And thanks to their leadership and dedicated continued support, they've ensured that the junior Vikings are able to use school facilities. So we thank them for their, their dedicated support and recognize them for all the good they do for this community. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson Washington?
Oh, it's me. It is been, it has been a very eventful month personally and professionally. But I want to thank Caitlin and John, our citizens that came to speak today at city council and for bringing awareness to events happening in our community. I will be unable to attend tomorrow's candidate forum because I'm going out of town, but that's why I asked about streaming, because I would like to watch it while I sit in the airport. But, but I will be checking that out later. I want to thank our new business owners and applicants that came out tonight to accept your congratulations and be interviewed. And I feel like our council can be a little, we're nice, but I think that we care so much about the city that we really want the new businesses that we are bringing in to reflect Hazel Park to its best. So thank you to those new business owners and applicants. I want to say publish the Equal Rights Amendment. I also just want to acknowledge that it is also Pregnancy and Infant Loss Month. And as a rainbow baby from my mother, I want to acknowledge that for those mothers out there that have also suffered loss. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Mondo?
Thank you, Your Honor. Been a couple of months since I've been here, so I'm just going to speed run some of the other stuff. Happy third birthday to Finn, who was, turned three on September 16th. And it is Mira's seven-month birthday today, so happy seven months to Mira May. Nineteen years ago, I had a routine screening. My mother had a lump detected in her breast. And instead of doing just targeted chemo and radiation, she underwent a double mastectomy. And nineteen years later, is still completely in remission. So breast cancer screening saves lives. Extremely grateful to this body for raising up this resolution and just bringing it to the public's awareness. Thank you to Dr. Mona and our ex-kids. Became aware of this program. Being from the Upper Peninsula, the Eastern UP, which is one of the more impoverished areas of the state, this program has just been an absolute godsend for a lot of the eastern Upper Peninsula counties. And to have this in our neck of the woods is just honestly really fantastic. So thank you to them. Thank you to the legislators in Lansing who were able to include additional funding for this in the budget. Ed, again, congratulations on the Sinclair Award. It was really a pleasure to, to be there, to witness that and to be in the room and just see a lot of your, your peers and electives across the state. Recognize you and your accomplishment. Feel very, very lucky to have you here. Lacey, Alicia, congratulations on the Finance Vision Award. That is a, a big deal. There is an election in a few weeks, as many of you may not be aware. So please vote. I know that there's only two things on the ballot, but please go vote, do your civic duty. That is, it's extremely important. So whether you do absentee, show up in person, participate in early voting, you know, just make sure you have a plan to vote. And finally, happy birthday to Jan Stebbins, who turns 49 tomorrow. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilperson Sullivan?
All right. I also want to congratulate Ed and Lacey on their accomplishments, awards, recognition. We are very lucky to have you in our community and always fighting for us and directing the kind of path that we head forward on in the city. So I also want to thank Dr. Mona and our ex-kids, our Oakland County commissioners, and all of the other experts that really, the members at Ola Olcha, who really brought this to our community. It's such a, it's really such a blessing and such a, such a need. When you invest in, when you invest in programs that help women and children and infants, you, the payback to your community factually is double, if not two and a half times. So that, that initial investment is returned into your community at double the rate, if not two and a half to three times the rate. So that's, that's great. Plus, we, we want babies and children and mothers to be supported, and this is such a great way to do it. I also want to thank Slasher Dave, Halloween Art Fair. He killed it, again, knocked it out of the park. The artists were great. I spent way too much money. It was lovely. I also want to remind people about the upcoming election. Absentee ballots are out now. I've got mine here. Don't forget to sign it before you return it. You can return those. They can be dropped off directly to our city clerk. They can currently be mailed. The last date to mail those would be, recommended mail date would be the 20th, so next Monday. After that, they recommend bringing them either indirectly to the city clerk, or we have two ballot drop boxes here in Hazel Park. We have one at city hall. We have one next to the rec center. Those are monitored 24/7 and secure, so you can drop your ballots there. Also wanted to remind people that with St. Justin's closing, Precinct 6 is now going to be voting at the Junior High. Everybody in that precinct has been notified. The information is updated on our website. But just a friendly reminder that if you previously voted at St. Justin's, you are now voting at Hazel Park Junior High. I want to remind people of the trunk or treat happening the same day as the coats giveaway at the fire department. So you can go get a coat. That's not just for kids, it's for adults, too, that might be in need. So you can stop by the fire department, go grab a coat so that you're nice and warm this winter. And then you can head over to Scout Park from 1:00 to 3:00 and see us over there for the trunk or treat. I know Andrea and I are going to be dressing as cowgirls this year. I don't know what everybody else is planning, but...
Excited.
We've got our boots ready to go.
We've been planning.
We have been planning. We are very excited. So we're excited to see everybody's costumes. We've got lots of good candy and stickers and allergy-free stuff. And that's it. And reminder, as the nights get darker sooner, pay attention, watch for pedestrians, watch for kids, watch for bike riders, watch for dog walkers, please. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to wish everybody a happy Halloween. We won't see you in, for another meeting till then. And thanks to Dave Monastery. It's easier, it's easier to call him Slasher Dave than use the last name, but for bringing us the Haunted Hazel Park Halloween Art Fair. It was a blast to be there. And I really want to thank Dr. Hannah for coming and presenting us with our ex-kids. This is like a hug to the whole family, the mom and the children. So like I say, if you love somebody, tell them. And if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. So this is like a hug for them all through their beginning. And get out to vote. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, wait, I forgot. Oh, wait, I forgot. Thank you for coming out and participating in the democratic process, Jeffrey.
Thank you. As many of us have friends and families and members we've, we've known that has breast cancer or has fought breast cancer and beat it, and some we've lost during that time. It's a reminder every time we pass a resolution to be thankful for what we have and to be thankful for those that are living that was able to fight the good fight. And also, it's like, again, like Councilman McCarroll says, like, a big hug for the our ex-kids. Looking out and supporting families is a big part of what communities do. We're all people, and we all love each other and try to get along as best we can. And happy Halloween. We're not going to be here pretty soon, and I just want to say that's something we need, that our kids are enjoying, just be safe out there getting around town. And I do want to say that the art, the Halloween art thing was just a fabulous event, and the firemen, they just pulled it off better and bigger this year than ever, and it was wonderful. And I do want to say one other thing. We had the Burleson family. I want to-
Oh, thank you, Mike.
Give my condolences to the Burleson family. Their show, their viewing is on Friday. Their funeral is on Saturday for Peggy Burleson. She passed away last Sunday. This family was the, some of the best volunteers this community has seen in a lot of years, the last few that we've had. We knew a lot of them, but Peggy and Larry were the poster children for the volunteers of our community, and they've lived a great life here and supported this community and helped out with the Lions Club for lead of dogs at a blind, and I think a lot of us are members still at the Lions Club. And for those Lions out there that want to pay their respects, I was asked to pass it along. Seven o'clock Friday at Hot Pro Funeral Home, there'll be a walk-by for all the Lions Club members that want to pay their respects to Peggy and their family for all the volunteerism and all the commitment in which they gave Hazel Park for all the dedicated years. And I think that's what really, they really show a lot of people their respect and give a lot of respect and helped a lot of people that didn't have anything. We all built wheelchair ramps and did a-
Yes, I wanted to say that. If you drive around the city of Hazel Park-
I remember-
-see a wheelchair ramp in front of a house.
I remember-
This is how Larry built it.
When I first became a Lion, Larry tucked me under his wing in 2001. We put a window in the back room of a bedroom for a lady that was a quad paralytic in her bed. She wanted to stare at the birds in her backyard. We ripped the whole back wall off of her room and pulled a full view window in so she could enjoy the view, and I'll never forget that, never have. And how she, you know, being part of an organization that did a lot of this, it just, it makes you, warms your heart that it's, it's still going on, but it's not as powerful as it once was, because I think we've all lost a little bit of that community spirit to be those volunteers, to be those champions, and as, you know, as much as we can. And that's why I think that a lot of us here on the council and other boards and commissions, we're all volunteers in our own way, and we step out of the line, we step out of our lives and become more involved with how things run in this community. We try to make it better for the next person. That's what we are about here. We are just stewards sitting in seats here, trying to navigate a budget and make sure the city stays alive for the next generation. And that's what we got to look at, how we benefit from the next generation that's going to be taking care of us and looking out for us, and that's what the future is. And I want to say thank you.
Mayor, that was so well said, and I'm so glad that you remembered to recognize Peggy Burleson. She was just an extraordinary volunteer here, along with her husband Larry. I mean, they ran that beer tent every year for the Lions Club for, for decades, and they were just great people who really dedicated so much of their lives to making this community a better place.
Look at what they did in the schools. She worked in the schools as an aide. She helped out do their, her husband did the same. He retired Navy officer. They just brought this commitment to this city, and their children are still here.
Absolutely. Tremendous volunteers. I need a short executive session for personnel.
Motion to move to executive session for personnel.
Support. Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out.
Thanks, everyone.
Reconvening the meeting after the exec session of October 14, 2025. Motion to do so, please.
Your Honor, I move that we resume our regularly scheduled meeting and exit executive session.
Second.
Okay, let's move forward.
Your Honor, I move approval of the recommended contract consolidations and alterations for the city manager and deputy city manager.
Support. Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes.
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn.
So move.
Second.